Welcome councillors. We'll get underway, I can hear the clock striking. So we're right on time. Welcome to the first meeting of the, what I would call, Good News Committee. And if it isn't good news, then we're not doing our job right. So, welcome to the meeting. Welcome to members of the public. We'll get going. Apologies, I have apologies from councillor Aaron Hawkins, an apology for lateness from councillor John Vazette, and an apology from councillor Kate Wilson, who's on council business. So I'll move from the chair, those apologies being sustained. Seconded councillor McTavish, all in favour? Thank you. Confirmation of the agenda, I don't have any proposed changes to the agenda, are there any others? In that case, I'll move the agenda being confirmed. Seconded by councillor Noon, all in favour? Declaration of interest is therefore moving. And that brings us to our first item on the agenda, the Gigatown campaign. And welcome Stuart, welcome Des. The floor is yours.
Right, okay, so I've written a synopsis of Gigatown, it's been a few months now since the campaign has started. So the paper sort of talks about what Gigatown is, it's a nationwide competition. We're competing with 50 towns to attract a gigabit ethernet internet connection to the city. Since this paper was produced, Telecom have come aboard now to provide a giga Wi-Fi connection too, to add more weight to this campaign. It's quite a competitive competition and we're here at Centre in the City to really promote it coming to Dunedin. So our campaign strategy, very early on, very early on, the very first meeting we had with Corus and members of the council and the old CEO from the council, was that this is an opportunity. Now, the campaign is frustrating because it's all about social media and votes through Twitter and Facebook and so on, and that is quite a frustrating part of the campaign. But the end goal is very attractive. It's about providing the fastest internet in southern hemisphere in Dunedin. Now with the Telecom offer as well, with the Wi-Fi, it is incredibly a connected opportunity. So the end game would be a city that by far in southern hemisphere has the most connectivity. Now the questions that we all said at the very beginning was, right, let's use the opportunity to win the competition? Absolutely, we want to win it. But secondly, also use the opportunity to take our businesses on a journey. The business community and our community, there's an opportunity to use technology. We all know that technology is playing a big part in how we do business and how we communicate. So use this campaign to get the educational message out there of what internet broadband can do. So since the launch of this campaign, we've been talking to the business community, about 20 businesses so far, asking them how they use the internet today and how they can use it in the future with fast broadband. So we're using this campaign as an awareness tool, as a way to promote fast broadband in this city. We're also clearly want to win the competition. Now, one of the things that we wanted to understand very early on was, what is the economic benefit of Gigatown? It's really a message that obviously this panel here, or constituency here in too. So we spoke to Chattanooga, Ian McCourt, had a Skype call last week. I spoke to the person who runs that campaign over in the US. And also we talked to Google, Google Fiber, we're in a similar thing in the US as well. Nowhere else, southern hemisphere, just those ones over in the US. And what's come across so strongly is that it attracts growth. I mean Chattanooga sent a thousand new jobs in February on the back of this, that's great. It attracts new businesses to the city. Say you want to provide an online service, where else would you do it? Except for the most connected place in the country. But the other thing that's really come across so strongly from conversations is that the branding around this has been the key message. The cities that have Gigatown in there are promoting themselves as the most connected place in the country or that part of the world. And from there seeing people come to the city to start new businesses, seeing people get on board with broadband and use the opportunity to. So it's a bigger incentive. The competition itself is the connectivity, the gigabit internet connectivity, plus a 200k fund to help to promote the city, attract the opportunities here and drive innovation. It's not a grant, you don't get given 200k to give the businesses out here today. It's about growing economic growth for the city itself. So it's a great campaign, we're using it to raise awareness about fast broadband. We're taking our business on a journey, we're engaging our community, slowly getting momentum going now. We have some social media supports increasing. We have videos being produced to show the benefits to our businesses and our campaigns routine now. The summary here, it's changing by the week, but certainly I'm happy to answer any questions in the report.
Questions councillor? Councillor McTavish?
Well, I've got a few, and some of them are aligned with some of the questions that councillor Hawkins sent through this morning when he was out and over the make-up. So, if I may, I mean, I appreciate some of these, I would have liked to have raised at the beginning of the competition and we've had some of our correspondence on them, but I'd like to just, yeah, understand a little bit of the conversations that you've had subsequent to those issues being raised. So one of the issues which I think has been raised by constituents contacting me on this competition is the fact that they're concerned that there is the implication, or maybe an understanding amongst their citizens that they will get access to gigabit internet, that they'll be able to activate it at entry level prices. But in fact, there is actually an RSP cost associated with connecting, and we have no idea or concept currently of what that might be. Have there been any discussions around that, and if so, have we had any indication of what the RSP cost might be?
Absolutely, I mean, at the very start of this campaign, we had a series of questions come in from the Boston community and we're still getting those questions now, about RSPs on board here, what's the cost of the actual service to the community and businesses. And we field those questions. And we brought down to Dunedin the lady who runs this whole campaign from Corus. She came and briefed the body, opened invitation, talked about the campaign. And last week we brought down one of the architects for an online Q&amp;A session. What they said was that when it comes to supervisory internet, Corus provide the backbone, the fibre really now. The people who provide the internet on the service, they're talking to them right now. They've got ongoing discussions, but they are very confident that the RSPs can provide this service. There's no question about it, if it wouldn't have started the campaign, those RSPs are a part of this picture. So I'm confident that would happen. When it comes to costings, the costing is the same price as the entry level UFB price will be. So that's what the competition says. So in reality, what that means is that the internet broadband today costs so much per household. The UFB is about the same sort of price. And we're going to find gigabit at the same price as UFB. That's what the competition is there about. So all the students, all the businesses, all the people at home, they're committed to this UFB entry level pricing.
So my understanding here, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the RSP would then have to pay Corus, basically the entry level price, which is $35 or whatever it is, and then they would add on top of that whatever they want to cost, or whatever costs they want to pass on to the consumer around providing that internet.
That's absolutely right, that's happens right now. So when you buy the UFB, and there's people buying UFB right now of course, they've got a choice of providers, Telecom, Motorphones, Snap, Wick, goes on and on. And they choose what they want to choose, and then their person comes and installs in their home. There's no difference in gigabit terms, what the Corus are saying is they're talking to all those providers. So when the competition comes to the end next year, so the first January 2014, then they provide that service to the country. Now, I haven't got the name of the RSPs. What I've been told through the lead of this campaign is that they're talking to them right now about that service and what they're providing.
But we don't necessarily have clarity around what costs that RSP might come in at. So we don't know how much it will actually cost the consumer to have that gigabit connection. One would assume that if there were no additional costs associated with providing that connection, the RSP would provide it for a similar cost to that which they currently do. But there are no guarantees of that.
I mean, it's impossible to guarantee it, right, because it's a commercial agreement that hasn't been put in place yet. But certainly when we asked that question of the architect, that's really, and of Victoria Curry who runs this campaign, the figures are $80, $100 is what they're looking at per month, which is actually cheaper than what you pay right now. I mean, you can buy gigabit right now, but the costs are up here, it's huge costs and you're now hearing this sort of price. So I haven't got those, that confirmation of the contracts and all, and that's going to be fine tuned now as of the end of the year. This is the official one.
So in terms of the gigabit which is currently available, albeit at a cost, the costs as I understand are in the order of $50 per month plus an initial startup or connection fee. Was there any, when the decision was made by the EDS steering group or whoever, was there a weighing up of costs and benefits of investing $60,000 in a Gigatown campaign which may provide the entire city with gigabit connection potential? And the cost of potentially seed funding businesses which may seek to benefit or may benefit the most from? So, I mean, I haven't done maths, but if it costs $350 per business to make that connection, you can get an awful lot of $350 connections out of 60k.
Yeah, I don't know that that cost is the cost, I'm not too sure of things, so I haven't got that information. But I think we've got to look at the big picture, right, so this, when we did this campaign, at the very beginning is that this is an opportunity to get the gigabit ethernet to businesses and communities at a knockdown price. There's gig Wi-Fi that's coming to the picture too now, which if you can imagine would be the octagon and down the main street here. And that would provide the fastest Wi-Fi access in the whole southern hemisphere as part of this package too, plus the 200k as well. So there's this whole mix of things provided for this campaign. But the thing that we said at the very beginning was that, right, let's use this to motivate the businesses. So let's use this opportunity to get excited about broadband. Uptake around the country's low, right now in UFB, it's just trickling along slowly, still going to increase. But we all know the benefits from this is going online are substantial, and I talk this in my country every day. And there's great examples of businesses transforming themselves by going online, using online services, changing how they do their products in the market and opening new markets around the world. So if we can get businesses on that journey too, that's a great advert. And so part of our campaign is to go and listen, to talk to them, we've got 20 so far of the ones we want to correspond with. We have 500 videos out there right now, and to get them on this journey at the same time, and that's part of our campaign.
Yes, so just to come back to my original question, though there was no analysis done necessarily of weighing up the potential around, you know, identifying 50 businesses that we might be able to provide directly with gigabit internet or subsidised gigabit internet, rather than investing in a may win type competition? The analysis?
I've got no idea, but as we've done before, I haven't an idea. What we did at the very beginning was had a really good robust conversation with Corus about the competition. And we decided at that point that some cities are focusing purely on winning it. We said, hang on a second, let's take this as an opportunity to produce awareness at the same time we're training. And that's where we've been.
Could I just note that the digital office did not approve this project, and neither did the Economic Development Partnership. The funding for this was a decision of the chief executive. And his belief that this would be a game changer for Dunedin, given that Dunedin has a strategy that's aiming at being a centre for innovation and education. So the decision was that of the chief executives, not the digital community trust or the digital office or the Economic Development Partnership.
Right, okay, thank you.
Got another question?
Could I ask mine in between you?
Oh, well councillor Thompson's next.
That's fine, I'll have you down if I have any need.
I don't want to disrupt the flow.
No, no, go for it.
My question's just slightly tangential really, but you mentioned in conjunction with this that the UFB uptake rates are not as high as you might expect them to be. And my own experience with regard to that was that I tried to take up UFB and the cabling runs right past the building that I'm in. But until the whole building takes it up, they won't put me on it. So is that likely to be an ongoing issue in light of, if we've got even faster speeds, do we have those? Are there constraints around the need to get a collective sign up before an individual can get there?
Yeah, that's a great question to ask the councillor. So digital office role is advocacy for the city when it comes to UFB. So probably not worth the fact that we, in year four or five, we're going to be rolling out, you know, taking the Corus work together. The only place in the whole country I brought Corus to answer, right, we wanted to focus on these areas where there's people working at home or the small businesses being created, like my small business in town. We wanted to push them in those locations around the city. The other thing we also do is advocate for those sort of type issues. So whether there's been a lot of discussion about the time it takes Corus to install an installation, sorry, the provider, the Corus work together to install an installation at home, we've been pushing Corus on Crown Fiber Holdings on this for a long time, trying to get that sort of target trimmed out. So it's a positive message. Multi dwelling units, which we're talking about there, about trying to get everyone to agree to sign up. That's a really good point, and a big holdback on the UFB rollout. If one person can't get hold of one person in MDU, it doesn't proceed. So we've been pushing ministry on this one to make policy change, to say, right, in MDU unit, if the majority say yes, then change it. So we can't change rules, but we can go and prod Crown Fiber up in Auckland. And we're the only ones doing this around the country and say, hey, listen, let's break down some barriers and get on with the UFB in Dunedin as fast as possible.
Mr Gal.
Sorry, I wasn't meant to stop councillor McTavish's flow, but it's part of the same thing. Any part of councillor Thompson's thing. I am an occupant of part of the Westpac building over here. Westpac building's got another problem because there's a whole lot of people in it. And you'll never get them all to agree, they don't normally pass out the fast broadband. Some of them are dentists, I mean. But not only is there a problem with connecting because the Corus stuff is now under the building, causing its own issues, but they're wanting to charge something like 17 grand or something per user to connect to it. You can't just put a connection at the building and then everybody hang off the side for, you know, 500 bucks or something or whatever. Each occupant has to pay the cost of taking up and down the building, it's just not worth it. And these are the same people, this is Corus. So, and I was listening while the Corus told the government that this would be the next thing, next best thing to slice free, ultra fast broadband, half a billion dollars for every cent of it, all the rest for that credit. And now they're using their position of, I've got it down there, you pay the money, you can have it. And that's a completely inappropriate control. But I can't see, since that's the behaviour of Corus, why they would stop doing it now, why we'd be so desperate to let them do it again to us with even faster broadband.
Obviously, comments in individual cases, what I do know is that there's two things that, so Frank and I can really talk about that particular case, was why the dentist connected UFB. And this is one of the things that we've taken on board as an educational programme because the UFB pricing compared to standard broadband is cheaper. So the question about would a dentist use UFB against use standard broadband is something I've heard before. So we went out and did cost analysis against providers, UFB, against standard broadband, against Telecom and others, and the cost is cheaper.
Sorry, that wasn't the question, the question wasn't why they would use it or not. The thing is that Corus is holding people in the building to ransom, charging them a big amount to get it there. It's not the cost of the consumables as if we want to get it there, it's the cost of getting it there. And they put it there on the basis that the government believed that it would then be accessible. It isn't really realistically accessible.
I don't understand that, but I mean, the Corus' UFB is delivering to the premises, right, and then the provider provides it through the building. So if there's a building issue, I couldn't obviously comment, but certainly it is to provide the service to that location, like a school is, like a community, like businesses, like something like that. I don't know why $17,000 for that isn't seriously the right money.
Cost like came.
Councillor Benson, your last question? Any other questions?
Just got one, a further one, and that pertains to, I mean, looking forward, in the event that come, what is it, October, November, December? September, we win the competition. I imagine that there are a number of things that would be helpful to have lined up once a town wins a competition like this in order to facilitate rapid taking of that opportunity. One of the things that I understand, for example, is that there's a bit of a wait time or potentially potential issues around connections, particularly with reference to things like heritage buildings and some of the older office blocks and things like that. Is there work going, obviously these are things that regardless of whether we win the competition, it would be worthwhile sorting out. But is there work going on around those things? And would we be confident that even if we did win the competition, things would progress smoothly and rapidly towards the point where a large number of citizens are able to make use of this opportunity?
I think that's a really good point there, it's something that we take on board. I mean, we've got a very supportive economic president here and a supportive CEO of the council and we've had the Corus down here a number of times to face the music of some of the issues that we've been facing. I think things like the building not being done and the heritage buildings are really good points we could raise. And as we get, as we get to that stage, so September is a cut off, so it goes down from this large number to the top five. And they fight out in that top five to win the competition on the end of this year, they get an accident. We've got to keep, we've got to ramp up our engagement with Corus towards the end of that to make sure to hand over to giga ethernet and more speed to all there for that. So I think that's a really good point, and certainly we as an office do already, but we do more on the business side.
Councillor White.
Thank you. Stuart, can I first congratulate the team at Gigatown? Because everywhere I've been, I've seen them, and I think they've done a great job, I see Josh everywhere on that. I've got a question for the other councillors, and how many have signed up to Gigatown? I think we can start right here and get some more people supporting it. What has been rolled out in the next couple of weeks?
From what I can do?
Yeah, what do you really?
So Josh isn't here right now, he's down at Orientation Week. We've got a few businesses who are fighting prices around there. So he's down there getting student votes and so on at the moment. One of the things that is happening right now is the Instagram competition, which is a little video competition. And you get 1,000 points for that, so we have that competition underway. In the pipeline, Corus oppose a school competition, doing some videos around the schools. We've been to probably about, I don't know, maybe 10 or so schools now, talking to them about the broadband opportunity, about what you can do and how you can use the internet for homework, schoolwork and so on. So we want to get schools on board really quickly too as well. And we're just carrying on and really pushing that campaign. The social media part is always a bit challenging because you've got to do Facebook tweets and Twitter and so on. But the other things like these Instagram competitions are really changing the whole dynamic of the competition and you can get a lot of points very, very quickly.
Councillor Adams.
Thank you for giving us detailed answers to a lot of these things. My understanding is that a city the size of Dunedin, because of the way the competition is structured, is not going to win this anyway. I mean, simply the way the competition is structured. It's not a giga city campaign, it's a gigatown campaign, it's going to be a small town. That's just what I've been told from people who know about these things. Given that it's unlikely that we are winning, do you think that the investment that we're putting into the campaign and the extra awareness that you talked about, that you're trying to get businesses to realise, do you think that we're going to see value for the total that is being spent on this?
To answer two questions, so can we win this? Absolutely we can win this, right? At the moment, the competition is geared around social media points, right? So if I do one social media hashtag, I get one point, whereas other towns get more points, up to six, up to eight. And so it's because the population change. But we're going to motivate the masses, right, that's how we're going to win this, and we'll start to see that now as well. Get more engaged by this and more people online, more people want to support this campaign. So we can win it, absolutely. We wouldn't have taken this on at the very beginning if we didn't believe we could win it, I think we can win it. The reason, the reason at first, very initial meeting that we all said we could win this, and you know, the universities VC and Polytechnic and all the people around here who are supporting this campaign is that Dunedin would do well out of this, because we've got talent in the city, we've got some great brains coming out of university and Polytechnic, we've got great incubators, EDU and everyone's in town who are supporting businesses grow, and then we've got the fastest connectivity in the whole of the country. It's a great combination, far better than anyone else in the whole country. So anyone else in the whole country has to have that true combination. Though I know this because I've worked in this space my whole life, and we've got three things together that make a huge difference.
Okay.
So we win it, first thing, the value from it, absolutely, I think for the value from it.
We're going to get value for whether we win it or not, this is really the question.
Yeah, and the thing is that we are doing this because we're going to motivate the masses. We're already talking to people about what broadband is, what you can do online. Every day of the week we're talking, you know, we've got cloud computing, what is cloud computing? What we can do with, what does social media do for a business? We do this every day of the week. Josh is bringing out the whole city, talking about this and saying for myself, explaining what the benefits are going online. That's a great message, right? If we get the businesses starting to think about this opportunity during this transformational time, every penny will spend.
And the Chamber of Commerce has been helpful in terms of, I mean, it's got a direct connection with most businesses, have they really plugged it in as well?
Chamber of Commerce has worked at Digital Office for a long time. In Gigatown, from a view, of course, they're a target focus, so they're going to be a bit impartial about who they connect to. But certainly they've been very supportive of what we're doing.
Okay, great. There's one other question here, which is written to me, councillor Hawkins. Were the costs of funding campaigners out of the digital office ever weighed up against the potential benefits of other approaches in this space? He gives an example of incentivising and encouraging businesses to take up UFB service for currently available. The most obvious of these is that there would be a guarantee of better internet provision for a number of businesses as opposed to the long shot of winning access to gigabit internet that may well be subsidised by EDS initiatives. That's a question from councillor Hawkins, who's unable to be here as an Orcon today.
Wasn't that the same question? Yeah. So, the same question we asked before, I think, wasn't it? So I don't know what the announcers have done beforehand, what I do know is that when I first heard this campaign, I would say of, I went, crikey, isn't that some marketing campaign by Corus? We're not going to bother with that surely. They came down here, talked to us about it, and we had the old CEO in here and the additional community trust in here and some of the councillors. And we thought, this is an opportunity to really bring the community together, to start thinking about what we can do online. And the prize is certainly worth winning as well, so let's get behind it. So.
So it's a genuine win-win is what you were saying, whether we win it or not.
Absolutely, absolutely, I'm completely convinced about that, and I think that we're seeing that right now as well.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Thompson.
Just, sorry, just, when you say we're seeing that right now, will we have a kind of follow up report, wash up afterwards?
I'd love to.
Which gives some idea of whatever happened, what actually came out of it? Lessons learned, be brief.
Absolutely, I'd love to come back and just give you 10 minutes of what we're doing at Digital Office, around our volunteers out there, helping businesses with the 200 hours of community service in the last 12 months, helping businesses use online technology. Talk about that, we've got a product coming out next month about helping businesses transform themselves and what they are today to go online, and all the experiences around the companies we've spoken to around the city. I'd love to come and talk about that because it's transformational and really exciting.
Thank you very much.
Mr Thompson.
When this first started, I attempted to support it. My need for ultra-fast broadband is just to do dumb things faster, and I tried to support it, but I just frankly couldn't work out how to, and I gave up. So, and I may be the only person in Dunedin who's unable to work it out, but I suspect not. And I just wonder whether, you know, I mean, I'm not involved in Twitter, and I just, I couldn't follow the instructions, to be honest. And so I gave up. So I just wonder whether a really idiot's guide to how we can be supportive might actually be required.
Very much so, I've got some on the table over there, so I came prepared.
I'm not the only one.
We've got a fly, we could just pass out, which tells how to connect to it. Simplest way is to sign up, we get the tent points to sign it, but also just follow us on Facebook, because when I'm on Facebook, every time you put a comment in there, and our volunteers are on to Facebook all the time, the comments on there, they come back with a response straight away. And they're all volunteers, they're all keen as mustard. And so if you put something on there, not sure what to do, they come back straight away and say, hey, next time put a hashtag in here, or think about using Instagram or Twitter. We've got Instagram videos on there, how to use Instagram, how to use Twitter, knowledge guides, and then we also lots of briefings as well. But the flies over there in the corner of the desk, please take one, let's get more sign-ups.
I just asked a question, is there a benefit in signing up on full email addresses? If you've got more than one email address, does signing up on both of them count or help for it?
I don't really know, that's the one. I, I don't know if the rules would stop it, but I don't know where telling us, so probably yeah, probably can't do that.
Councilors, we have a recommendation here to note this report. Would someone like to move? Councilor President moves, Councilor Wyatt second. Any discussion? Councilor Tavish.
Thank you. Well, given I did a bit of a Q and A, I feel compelled to just, I, first thing I would like to say is that one of the nicest things about this competition, having watched it online over the last couple of months, has been the community aspect around it, and you do really get the sense that there are people out there who believe passionately in this, and they're probably people that haven't necessarily connected with each other over anything else, and they're, you know, actively working. And we've had some neat results, like the three D artwork, I mean, that's a, that was a really niche thing to come out of this. So I, I think that that aspect in particular has really struck me as being a positive from this campaign. I do have some questions about how we got to the point of investing sixty K in it, and I do have some questions about whether or not potentially we could have looked at other ways of leveraging the opportunities that are gigabit internet, because there are opportunities there quite obviously. But that's in the past, and we are in this competition now, and I would like, so long as it's, as we are going to be prepared to take those opportunities up, I would really love to see us win that competition. I think the critical thing though is that we do keep up that dialogue with Corus. I know you guys have been trying to raise the issues that have been coming from members of our, particularly our IT community who really understand this stuff. I don't pretend to, but I am regularly contacted by people who do have concerns, who do have concerns about the current UFB rollout, who do have concerns about the length of time that it takes for businesses to connect, who do have times, concerns about whether or not we would have the capacity to ramp up that connection, or those connecting businesses in the event that we did win this competition. So I think that, kudos to the team for the outreach that they're currently doing, but I think that there are some sort of fundamental grassroots issues that we need to be dealing with regardless, which I'd like to see, and maybe that there is work doing happening there, but I'd like to see a bit more of that reported back. So that, that's where I'm at with it. Thank you.
Now, other speakers? Councilor President, do you want to talk? Justin, just. Councilor Cowan.
I think the things surrounding this might be going to be more useful to us than the actual gigabyte town, we're not an option. And I would like to see a report back. I mean, I'd like us to ask one if that's the appropriate thing, I don't know how, what the appropriate thing is, but, and some sort of report on the issues of connection, because if we did win it, and people thought they were going to get something that they're not going to get, like seems to be happening with Corus and UFB at the moment, then we wouldn't want people to be terribly disappointed about something that they could never have realized to be expected. It's just that we gave them an idea that it would be better than it was.
Councilors, I think there is a job for all of us here, and that is that if we do hear of businesses that are struggling to get connected, that want to be connected and are having significant delay, then if you could just get that information either to myself or to Stuart, they will go on the agenda. We've had to do that for a couple of businesses already, and yes, the problem is that the people who can put these connections into the ones that are putting the cables around doing everything else, so there's a little bit of prioritising needs to be done. So if we do hear of that, we do want to get particularly our businesses connected, so just let us know and we'll do what we can to lobby through the office.
I understand we're taking on about three more staff in the next couple of weeks just to do connections, sort of try and catch up. So, councillors, I've put the resolution, all in favour, against Kerry. Now we move on to Tourism Dunedin. Welcome, Hamish, welcome, Trish. Do you want to speak? Go, give us a lead in, and then we'll take some questions.
Thank you, and excuse my, excuse my asking for this. One of the challenges in delivering a half-year report that's within line of the local government reporting framework is when information is actually available. In this instance, the cover note from DCC and the half-year report from Tourism Dunedin reflects information that was available at the time, and that was for the period through to end of November two thousand and thirteen. So with your permission, I'm very happy to now give you an update that reflects the figures to the end of the calendar year, which is to the end of December two thirteen. So if I'm correct, that the discussion indicators and results are on pages five point two and five point three of your papers, then I'll just go through those. So KPIs one through to seven remain on target. KPI eight is met. KPIs nine and ten will not be met this financial year, as human resources are down on equivalent one point five full-time equivalents and won't be replaced over the period of this financial year. KPIs eleven and twelve are on target, KPI thirteen is already met, KPI fourteen is on target, KPI fifteen is halfway through the normal activity, and I would suggest is well and truly on target. Some of the activities that we negotiate through the statement of intent are based on what we, activities we would expect to occur. For example, we would expect to be attending a training session in North America with Tourism New Zealand. However, it would appear that Tourism New Zealand will not be arranging one within this financial year, and on that basis, we won't be meeting that particular activity. KPI sixteen is on target, KPI seventeen is on target for industry support. However, with human resources down, we are unlikely to attract additional joint venture cash for activities. KPI eighteen is now unlikely to be of any value, given the transitioning into the city council and the single marketing agency. KPI nineteen is now met, with an increase of total commercial visitor nights is increased to five point four percent against a target of one point six. KPI twenty is now met, with an increase of domestic commercial visitor nights to the year-end December thirteen, a five point four percent increase against a target of one percent. KPI twenty-one is now met, with an increase of international commercial nights increased to three point nine percent against a target of three percent. KPI twenty-two is now met, with market share being slightly above the commercial visitor night levels of last year at two point five three percent against a target of two point five one. KPI twenty-three will not be reported on as opposed to not met, as the target reflects an obsolete measurement format and collection method. Because this is likely to be the last time that I'll be presenting a report for Tourism Dunedin to council, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank those councillors, both past and present, who have supported and encouraged the board and the staff of Tourism Dunedin and me. Thank you.
Questions, councillors? Councilor Cowan.
Justin, thank you very much for your time with us, both of you. The, I thought we could just pick your brains briefly while they were here. Do you have any knowledge of international visitors being affected by the clear indication that New Zealand is making Queenstown a hub and therefore, like if we're trying to book out of here, we're sort of encouraged to either go through Christchurch, as we sometimes used to, but more likely now Queenstown, is that affecting as far as you can tell? Is it an international thing?
Queenstown provides both a challenge and an opportunity to us, and right now probably much more of a challenge. The Christchurch earthquake significantly affected aviation in the South Island, and with demand to be this Christchurch focused, Queenstown attracted much more of a focus and became, became much more of a hub. For us in Dunedin, and we've really, really noticed the effect of that, I believe, in the changing traffic flows and patterns throughout the South Island, it allowed Queenstown to be holidayed, or used much more as a single destination, almost a fly and flop destination. So we previously, and I'll use the Australian market as an example, previously, the majority of Australians coming into the South Island were flying into Christchurch, and in order to get to Queenstown, I guess either fly, or perhaps pick up a motorhome or a car and journey to Queenstown, where by Dunedin would probably be more likely to be included in an itinerary. With flights now more often directly into Queenstown, it means that they don't have to journey to Queenstown, they can simply stay there for a holiday for a week and not journey beyond that. The challenge is to attempt to get some of that repeat business to the South Island on the basis that we've had a nice time in Queenstown and grateful to Dunedin to come there. Our direct air services from Queensland into Dunedin three times a week is still of enormous importance, and obviously we still have seasonal services. So we're still looking at activity in the Australian market, and we, we absolutely must continue particularly domestically to ensure that Dunedin isn't seen by airlines simply as a captive market to fly out, but Dunedin as a destination that is worthy of flying into and services to do that. I think the, the, the most positive aspect for us in tourism has been the reopening of the Dunedin Centre and Town Hall for business events. You know, Dunedin's got a small number of commercial accommodation properties, and we notice blips significantly. When Elton John was on Forsyth Bar Stadium, for example, that was the best November Dunedin had had in commercial accommodation for thirteen years of data collection. We notice it when there is a major rugby event on at the stadium, and we noticed it in November and December, particularly when there were great business events in Dunedin, and in particular when twelve hundred people, not all staying in commercial accommodation, were here for the mammalogy congress that was on at the university. So the airlines and businesses will be interested very much in a sustainable business case.
Councilor Tavish.
I didn't have a question, I was just going to move.
Okay, we'll get to that. So next on ours, Councilor Vadas.
The KPI nine that you said wasn't able to be done because you've got one point five FTEs. How hard is it to establish a set of metrics to measure website engagement? Surely it's just a matter of getting on the web and finding a set, this is not, this is not a wheel that needs reinventing?
It's about intention to travel, or intention to make the decision to travel to Dunedin, so it's actually quite a bit more involved. Tourism New Zealand, for example, have a significant research market that they call the active considerer, and in this group of people, they have identified as people who are actively considering coming to New Zealand. It was our desire to attempt to investigate a set of metrics that could indicate a desire to travel to Dunedin. So it is, it is time-consuming and requires thought and a person to do that.
And you don't know that being done anywhere else? Wellington as well, or Elton as well?
Not to our knowledge, not of, not of our other RTIs.
Okay. Number seventeen, you gave the same reason for a joint, joint venture partner funding not happening. What's actually involved in time or expertise in trying to get this joint venture business happening?
Yeah.
Was this a long shot in the first place?
No, this is, this is what we do, what we have done. But the, the concept is that we wish to come up with a marketing initiative. Tourism Dunedin only has so much money, and the aim is to try to get the rest of the visitor economy on board to leverage that, get more bang for the buck through a coordinated marketing approach. That requires time, sitting down, talking with the industry, finding out what time they would like to, what time of year they're having challenges, whether they have any interest, whether they would like to have, like to invest, at what level would they like to invest? And then developing with them such an initiative and taking them, taking that initiative back out to them in order to, to get them to buy into it. So it actually, it is, it's a business case, it is involved, it requires sales and marketing, and we don't have, might have a person on board to be able to do that.
And that would be to a number of different operators?
Yeah.
Individually?
Yeah, individually. So we go to the hotels, the accommodation providers, attractions and all.
Thanks for clarifying that. On, sorry, the twenty-one, the international commercial visitor nights, how do you calculate cruise ships for that?
They're not calculated at all. So, so visitor arrivals to New Zealand also don't include cruise ship, cruise ship visits?
So cruise ships isn't in the KPIs?
They're not in the slightest, no. And yet we receive, what, a hundred and sixty thousand cruise ship passengers plus up to sixty thousand crew to the Dunedin region, weather permitting, during the year, obviously a number that Queenstown, for example, does not receive.
Wonderful, and that's, that's a bonus over above what we have here.
Certainly is.
There seem to be some distinct improvements between your end of November two thousand thirteen and your end December figures. Is that usual for the year, to have such a lift in a month? Or have the figures been looked at a bit differently?
I, I think that we were, what we've noticed is that from May in particular, we've noticed a rise, an overall rise in commercial accommodation. So, so the positive numbers, and they were particularly positive in December, just managed to push that over for the accumulated year figures. But we did have some significant events, and, and I wonder also to what extent in December, with retail, I think was overall up for December as well, to what extent that Dunedin was used as a, as a retail centre as well, as people were feeling slightly more comfortable with the economy, but certainly two or three major business events, and I'll use that mammalogy one again, people were staying for at least four nights with that fantastic business venue run here in town, and that, that's the type of thing that truly creates a positive benefit in a small city such as this.
Right. I just wanted to personally thank you for all your efforts in, in an industry which is a pretty tough one, and that there are a whole lot of things that are actually outside of your control, and yet you have this KPIs thing that you've got to do anyway. your control and yet you have this KPIs and you've got to do anyway. I don't envy you for the job at all, but thank you very much for always being incredibly positive about it. One last question really is regarding convention market, which I've always found to be a wee bit difficult, especially in terms of spending forty-two and a half million dollars on the Town Hall and the justification basically being we were going to get, you know, we were going to get value out of it and more conventions here. Given that it's been running for a wee while now, do you see any of the promise that was lauded when we were spending the forty-two and a half million? Do you see any of that promise being realised or do you think that really we've got a lack of struggle with conventions?
Well firstly, given that it took some time for the Dunedin Centre to actually have the refurbishment undertaken, there was obviously a lot of discussion leading up to that, that during the years that it was first mooted, business was being turned away and turned down on the basis that we might be closing the Dunedin Centre next year for refurbishment. So for my organisation, in many ways, the Dunedin Centre was closed for close to five years as opposed to the two-year period or so that it actually was closed. So since reopening, it has attracted more business back into the city and whilst the motels may not be seeing an increase in occupancy, the hotels most definitely have and I think that that would be a direct result from business events. I think that the closure of the Christchurch facilities due to the earthquake as well and then our subsequent closure was unhelpful and a lot of business went to the North Island and we're attempting to get that back. Unfortunately, it's working the other way that there's still quite a bit of sympathy for Christchurch and a desire to perhaps put some business in there and we need to be very aware that there are on the table three major conference and convention centres for the country being mooted, Auckland obviously, Christchurch and Queenstown. But the area that we compete in, which has the best fit, is in academic related and association related business. The sweet spot for that is around three to four hundred people and it's going to be Dunedin's intellect that brings those type, that type of business to us and there's a lot of potential out there. I mean, for some events, you're only, you're talking about attempting to find, and it's particularly during the low season between April and October, you're trying to find a lot, twenty-six events during that period of various sizes and trying to fit them in. So I think there is potential for growth there. I do believe it is undercooked, I think that we could do a lot better, be a lot more proactive, it is exceptionally competitive. The area that we really need to work on and that the new marketing agency needs to work on is thinking beyond bums and beds or conference and convention and thinking about knowledge exchange and business exchange. If we are able to attract expertise from around the world, staying in Dunedin over a period of two to three days for a conference that is suited to either their field of interest or expertise, then maybe we can do a much better job in our networking over and beyond that and looking at how we can further convert not only repeat visitation from that, but potential partnership and investment in the city from attracting that type of work. And I don't believe that there's any other region in the country that is ever attempted to look beyond simply bums on seats and bums on beds in that regard. So I think it needs deeper thought and deeper work and I think that it could benefit a city like Dunedin.
Just last question, if you could, another one. The, you mentioned the shortage of some accommodation here at some point and quite some time ago we looked at the idea of relocating the library and turning the existing library into a hotel that would service conferences in the Town Hall. Do you still think that that actually has any value going forward as something that we should investigate or do you think that really that having a very close proximity hotel built in the old library is not something which we should be investigating?
In my mind, there is the need for a hotel of an appropriate standard, a high standard. And generally, location in Dunedin isn't too much of a problem, that's one of our key benefits, is proximity to everything due to a compact size. So having properties between the hotel's precinct and exchange area right through to the stadium and the university area, I don't think that like it's finding space and attracting investment to build something along those lines that would be useful as opposed to just needing to take over the library, for example.
councillor Topps?
Just really following up on some of those issues. Roughly, how many beds do we have in terms of commercial accommodation and in average occupancy? And I know that that's obviously going to vary from kind of bed to kind of...
So I'm just trying to find, we had, we did a fine round and worked out that there were roughly somewhere over two thousand commercial rooms that could sleep over five thousand people roughly a night. And on top of that, obviously, you've got people who can stay with friends, your family and certain times of year you can use university hostels. And that's the problem with looking at averages and averages, average occupancies, Dunedin have probably got one of the higher hotel occupancies in the country, motel occupancy is okay. There are, as you can imagine, some motels who are operating at particularly high occupancy and continue to do so, great businesses, great managers, great locations and there will be other motel businesses and hotel businesses at the other end of the scale. And therefore, at times of the year, we end up with those averages. So, you know, operating at between fifty-five and sixty-five percent on average isn't probably too bad.
And the whole issue of events promotion is a fraught one because not just at this council, but in I think any council that wants to spend money on promoting events to try and increase the number of people coming to the city. But I wonder your comments around the whole education sector and that, is there any organised process around developing that convention market and leveraging off that education sector or is it something that happens more, you know, the society of such and such well says, well, why not let's get Dunedin a go this year as opposed to what might we be able to have a conference or a convention around and how might we leverage off that?
Yeah. So we have previously been in the business of creating or inventing a product, for want of a better term, before, you know, I think of Adelaide once created the convention, a festival of thought, I think it was. And I thought it was a really, really neat idea because it's the type of thing I would think that we had ideally the resources to be able to host and coordinate. And different associations have different ways they look at things. It might be on a North, South Island rotation, it really varies, it might be visit a city once every ten years or once every fifteen years, they have certain structures to the way they do things. The key to this really is partnership and one of the other challenges that we have is, you know, the university who tends to also attract or create great conferences and conventions of an international standard, don't necessarily want them also during any of the term times when they could have them on site. And the challenge is providing them, for example, with facilities that are, for example, off-site so that they can be helped throughout the year. You know, there are great opportunities for a business case, I believe, for greater conventions and congresses and business here in Dunedin. I think as a city, we've got the smarts. I don't believe that the city will ever attract the type of incentive travel that you would get if you sold X number of widgets, you know, the choices for those types of holidays, it might be a week in Fiji where I think that a weekend in Dunedin might be slightly more academic and that's, we may be more secure.
councillor Pate?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd just like also to add my thanks to Hamish Sexton and to the board also Trisha for their efforts to promote and build the tourism and for successfully, I think, negotiating that global financial crisis in two thousand and eight. Hamish, that was for you quite a challenge, I think. And what you brought today with a few more figures shows that we are kind of clawing our way back out of that, I think. Just a question, I know, KPI seventeen, I just wanted to flesh out a bit more about the industry support here because in terms of the dollar numbers or regards to, in your report, you talk about four hundred and ninety-eight thousand. When you say not met, you're talking about the funds coming from the industry support?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, but still that, so maybe explain to us why in-kind support, what the in-kind support amounts to, is it advertising by the individual operators and so on?
Yeah, so a couple of examples, in-kind support can come in the form of discounts or free accommodation, attractions or activities and we count all of that. In-kind can come in the form of marketing. So where we did a joint venture activity, for example, with New Zealand Grabuses, there will be a value to their online activity and that value could be in the tens of thousands of dollars. But because we don't invoice it, because it doesn't come through our books, it's not cash, it is an in-kind value and we count that as an equivalent advertising value or in-kind figure. So give us your example.
So not only on target, but then sort of exceeded by almost twice the amount of it. But anyway.
One of the challenges that we did have was that back in the day when it appeared that we had an Australian project, it's Project Gateway, we had probably significant more seed funding for projects than other regional tourism organisations. That allowed us to be able to be a leader. And being a leader in creating a joint venture, if we had seed funding, for example, of a hundred thousand dollars, we might be able to talk to our regional partners, the airlines, would you like to come on board to a joint venture? And then we would be able to invoice them for those funds. We're no longer funded for that type of initiative leadership and it means that instead of being able to attract funds to us, we now are the ones who are investing in leveraging our funds. An example of that is the initiative with Christchurch International Airport itself. So we have a shared representative promoting the southern, promoting the South Island based in Shanghai. We buy into that. If we come out with that initiative and invoiced it, then we would have been from a cash contribution perspective over a hundred thousand dollars up. So that's an example of a cash joint venture initiative that we would attract, have attracted to our figures.
Okay, one more question, Mr Chairman. In your report, Hamish, you envisaged Dunedin as a premier tourism destination, that's the phrase you used there. And I'm just going to ask you about, because we've got you here and maybe this is the last time, maybe not, to just go through those points of difference that Dunedin has that would make it a premier tourism destination. You mentioned in a big way the knowledge conventions and so on that we have here, but maybe just tell us what you think are the big winners for Dunedin?
Well, I think Dunedin is exceptionally fortunate in having the wildlife on our doorstep. That's one of the major areas of attraction to the city. Coupled with that is the heritage architecture and being a city at first. The education is obviously a major attraction and I think we also see those during those graduations and how that fills the city. But the recognition of those aspects as being a premier destination hasn't managed to hit home, I don't think, around the world. And as Tourism New Zealand investigates five or six alternative areas to concentrate on New Zealand and those areas include high-end luxury, arguably Dunedin doesn't do particularly well in that area. Cycle trails are a major area and we're not doing particularly well in that area. Walking and hiking, you know, we've got good stuff, but not as a premier walking hiking destination. So, and the list goes on a little bit. Look, I think that Dunedin is fantastic, but one of the things that we continue to make is the type of, the type of investment, corporate investment from larger tourism corporations. So for me, attracting a major brand, significantly major international brand hotel to Dunedin would help put us on the map. Having investment from brands such as Naitahu Tourism, such as Real Journeys would help ensure that their collective marketing, that they do offshore and their resources would absolutely ensure that Dunedin was on the map and not simply a choice or geographic dogleg. Dunedin appeals to those with great product to the right people for the right reasons. But that hasn't made necessarily a must-see destination that we try really hard to promote as.
councillor Pate?
Thank you. You're probably aware that the meeting following this one has a paper on the agenda about charges to inter-coach institutions. Were you asked for your views on that issue?
No.
Had you been, what would you have said?
Well, there'd be no easy answer to that, but we would, our board has discussed it, we have discussed it. The concept of developing a product, developing a card, for example, that you see offshore in Oslo throughout Europe, there must be opportunities to develop a card of one to two days of attraction to the city that could be coordinated. I've also worked in a museum where we did charge and when we dropped that charge, the numbers raced in. But the numbers racing in were only important when that was a KPI. So I think that those things need to be discussed. I know that when it comes to museums and galleries when I'm offshore, it's a bit of a bustin' holiday and when I've been to Europe, I've had to pay if I've wanted to go into cultural institutions. But those cultural institutions also were worth it and I think we have to ensure that we have the right product, again, marketed in the right way to the right market. So longer conversations, not a yes or no, but something that we, from a product development perspective, would like to be involved in because any reason, any product to try to get people to stay longer in our city ought to be investigated.
Any more questions? councillor Tavish, you indicated you might like to move?
Yeah, I would and if I could, I would like to add a second part to it, which I'm just about to just go on to send to the ladies of the scene. And that is that the committee extended thanks to the board, CEO and staff of Tourism Dunedin for their significant contribution to Dunedin and to the tourism industry over the years since the entity was established. I may not have got that entirely right, I sent it to you quite quickly.
Do we have a second? We'll try and get them up.
Was this off a fast broadband or gigabit connection? So you've moved the resolution, the hazardous in the paper, plus this added resolution.
Could I suggest, I'm not sure whether you left the word staff out.
Yeah, I probably missed it.
No, it's been.
Oh, it's been.
I should have said that was what you meant.
Yeah, that's entirely, and I also neglected, and I don't neglect to see that, but the to Leeden and to our tourism industry.
So while we're getting that tidied up, is there any discussion, Councilor Z?
Yeah. I'm pleased that this is coming up. I was going to remove a resolution myself, and I think, and it's not necessarily mentioning this while Hamish is here, but I wanted to make it a little bit more personal because the CEO, I would like to change that so that Hamish Sexton is mentioned, and I'd also like to change to the council makes a, extends its thanks to the board. But I wanted to mention Hamish in particular because he's been a wonderful advocate for the city over many years. And you mentioned it just earlier on, Hamish, that might be the last time you report, and that may be the case. Who knows what's happening in the future? But I certainly, from my personal point of view, and I'm sure everybody sitting around this table, hope that you continue in some role with Tourism Leeden because you have been such a wonderful advocate for the city over many years. I can recall the times we met with, in particular, well, most of the airlines, but in New Zealand on Project Gateway, and the battles we had with them, the battles that we won, and where we had significant victories with regards to the numbers of flights, international flights going in and out of the city. They unfortunately had dropped off, but a lot of that was really due to your personal association you had with the people within the industry. And I think you've done a wonderful job at City over the years. And if you can encapsulate that somehow in the resolution, I'd appreciate it. But I do think that I would like Hamish Sexton and others in there to personalise a little bit more.
Thank you. I have taken it on board, and we've got a meledig with Hamish's name included. Sorry, I don't have the names.
I don't think we necessarily need to sort of tie up the mix like that today, but as long as you get the message, we'll do it.
Other speakers?
I think I'd like to add my thanks to Hamish and to the board, Trish. You know, in some ways, this is, Tourism Leeden is dead, long live Tourism Leeden. And this, I see and hope that what we will see out of this is an even greater opportunity come our way. I think the skill sets that are in Tourism Leeden will undoubtedly transfer across into the new organisation, where we will be adding even greater focus to the things we do here. And I like your suggestion that the city could be seen as a place to come and, or a knowledge-based conference. I think you're absolutely right. The city is ideally positioned. We just need to get our university thinking more that way. And I think there's some great opportunities. So I extend my personal thank you and for all the effort you've put in during the unsettling time of looking at just where we headed, because that hasn't been easy. But I think the dialogue that's been between us means that the outcome in the end should be a really good one. So if there's no other speakers, I'll put the resolutions, all those in favour, I against. Carrie. Thank you, Hamish. Thank you, Trish. So now on to economic development, dispatching project. Welcome, Robert. Are you going to introduce someone?
Yes, I thought, for the chair, just like to take the opportunity to introduce the CEO of EA. She is our new person from Education New Zealand, who is going to push along the education, excellent education strategy over the next 12 months, and the first. So welcome, Sarah.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to speaking to you.
The floor is yours. Do you want to introduce or just go straight to questions?
I think we just go straight to it.
Very good. Questions, councillors?
Councilor Thompson?
Well, I have a question with regard to recommendations, just because in a side conversation between Councilor Calvert and myself, we both realised we've interpreted one of the recommendations quite differently between us. And it's with regard to B. It says from $10,000 to $50,000 by the following three people. I took it to mean one of the following three people, Councilor Calvert took it to mean all of the following three people, which does it mean?
It's the three people are required to make the decision.
Right.
And the elements are there in case the primaries have a conflict. So there has to be a representative from each of those, so.
I just wondered, I also have wondered why the Chair of Finance Committee rather than the Chair of Economic Development?
Because it's the same.
And it's, yeah, it's representative.
So the point is to allow the Chair of the partnership to be able to say, yes, the partnership is capable, this is a nod.
Okay. Because the Chair is the Chair of the partnership.
Okay. Bye.
Councilor McTavish?
Well, I just wonder, in the event that the EDS governance arrangements change, will the Chair of the Economic Development Committee always be necessarily the Chair of the group partnership?
At this stage, that's unclear. It'll depend how well, we have some proposals from the last meeting of the partnership on how to change the way the governance model, because the partnership were aware, they've seen this paper. So if the decoupling is sufficient, there is a desire from the partnership to continue with the Chair of Economic Development as the Chair of the partnership. But I'd make it very clear to them, from my point of view, there needs to be a clear separation between governments and the teams that are doing the projects and are assembling the budgets for approval. So we need to get some separation in that governance. And we do have a proposed model, which will come to you as a result of this paper, once we finally tidy it up and had some advice to make sure that from a public point of view, it's clear that there is a separation.
So given, just given that and picking up on Councilor Thompson's point, would it then be better at the end of the first line in one to add as an interim measure, given that if the governance arrangement does change, because point may be valid in that the Chair of the Economic Development Committee may or may not be the Chair of the Grode Leeden partnership?
I still think it's important that the Chair of the Grode Leeden partnership be one of those that is there in that decision-making, because they bring the knowledge of what it is that's trying to be achieved to that forum, and they are the one at the end who's responsible for the performance of the partnership.
I appreciate that, but I think Councilor Thompson's point was that there may be a desire on behalf of council, and I don't know, but I worked here for my colleagues, but for the Chair of our Economic Development Committee to be involved in that sign-off process. And in the event that you're not Chair, then.
Just as a suggestion, would be that the second point there should be the Chair of Economic Development Committee, which I can't remember which right. And if they're, basically, you want Chair of Economic Development unless they are the Chair of EDS Grode Leeden, in which case it would be the Chair of Finance.
Well, my suggestion would simply be that we add as an interim measure at the beginning of the paragraph, and then it can be revisited when the final governance model comes back.
I think I would be comfortable with that on the basis that there is work going on on governance and reporting. So there may be a wish for a change at that point.
Councilor Calvert?
Is the plan then to change that recommendation, or not change the recommendation, obviously, but we're going to approve it, and in two ways? One, be adding and and in the middle of those, and then changing that third one? Is that the?
What I've done is suggested that we put that council approves the following interim delegations, so that that then ties in with two, that the partnership has to respond to council around some items. And when that's done, then council will be in a position to, at a date after that, to make a decision on the final.
And you're adding an and in between the?
It should be for clarity, I think.
Yep.
It's either and or.
Yep.
And.
In both cases.
Yep.
Councilor McTavish?
I have some more questions. And I flipped some of these through earlier. So 50K figure, what was the rationale behind that? Is it, yeah, why was it deemed inappropriate trigger?
I don't think, I don't think it means an arbitrary figure, you know, it could have been possibly 40, or it could have been, that it was thought by the group that that would be an appropriate balance.
It was also the figure used in the original delegation to the Chief Executive. And at that time, it was to the Chief Executive, the Deputy Mayor and the Chair of Finance, Strategy and Development. So the number is remaining the same from that original delegation.
And in terms of that number, does that reference the ratepayer contribution, or is it the total project cost, i.e. if there was a $60,000 or $70,000 project that the EDS partnership wanted to embark on, $20,000 of which was not DCC ratepayer funding, but was perhaps a government grant or whatever, or a contribution from another entity? Would that come back to council for approval, given that council contribution was 40K? Or would it not, given it was?
No, it would not under this definition, yes.
So.
So this is $50,000 of the council.
It's that clear from the council resolution? It wasn't clear to me, read the resolution, that that was the case, but maybe.
Of the council.
The Economic Development Strategy Budget, they were here to make $350,000 to the Strategy Budget.
So the question that Councilor Walcon sent through around the total EDS budget in the sense of the number or the total cost of contributions coming from partners, was there any figures that could be put around that or not?
Through the Chair, we've gathered some information on that. What's been put through the partners at the moment is around about $400,000. So it's a considerable amount.
That's in this financial year or in?
That is, that is the 1st of July, through to the end.
Thank you.
Councilor Calvert?
If we're looking generally into the whole thing, which seems to me very useful because it needs sort of an amount of tidying up, could we also look into what happens if council decides not to invest somewhere or not to use money from annual rates or whatever, and then this fund is used for it? It seems to me that we might have to have, or it would be useful to have some protocols surrounding what happens, or at least a heads-up from this fund that it's proposing to do it. If, for instance, we spend an hour arguing about whether in the annual plan budget, we want to spend $50,000 or $55,000 on something, and then this budget just goes and spends another $10,000 of its own money and does what council has particularly decided not to do. What I'm saying is it's sort of another bite at the cherry for something we might have decided potentially.
It's got to have the Chief Executive's approval, so if it doesn't get the Chief Executive's approval, who is our authority, as I can take it, then the project will not go ahead in that form. So there is a go, no-go with the Chief Executive. And the other thing to point out here is while there is $385,000 in the Economic Development Project Budget, only a portion of that will go with projects that are run by the partnership. There are a lot of other activities that the Economic Development Unit undertakes and projects that run within the city itself that receive funding. So for instance, red carpet, not red tape, will get funding from the same budget because that it's part of our strategy development. So all of the projects that run through Economic Development are measured against the themes within the strategy that we're trying to achieve, and they need to fit within those themes. If they don't fit within those themes, then it's questionable whether we should be invested.
Yes, I was just thinking that when we're discussing things that might be, this budget might be used for, or this budget might not be used for, it would be good to know that there's another alternative way that we could support it or not if it competed appropriately. So not that they wouldn't be approved, but it would be good to know that there are other things, like if we found out grants-wise and things that we, a committee was allocating grants to somewhere, and then it turns out that there were three different parts of the DCC that they'd been getting a grant from, and had we known that, we might have looked at the grant differently or something. It would be good to know that this budget was either in or out, or that people were considering that it was more important enough to top it up using this or whatever. I just think that would be quite good to be in the mix.
Councilor Vanders?
At a previous meeting, several actually, I've been asking whether or not there's ever been a cost-benefit analysis done, looking at total costs and what churns through the budget. And I've been told that that hasn't been done to date. But it's something that I think, given the amount of money that's going through, we really should at some point, even if it's a pretty cursory one, try and have some kind of cost-benefit analysis. And particularly, I think, what I would like to see and have asked for in the past and never been able to see, and that is what really is the total cost of running the EDS, including really quite significant internal cost to the DCC. We've got figures in front of us regarding the fund here, and I'm all for consolidating a simple fund of $50,000. But there have traditionally been very significant staff costs and quite a lot of other costs as well, which I've never seen on one page. And I'm wondering, would it be possible to have in the foreseeable future, something like that? I'm getting a nod from the Chief Executive, so I'm very happy and I would quite say thank you.
We've got another couple. In terms of the EDS, one of the things that it notes in the beginning, or in the, wrote in the preamble, says that this document will sit alongside and will align with our cultural, environmental, digital, transport and social wellbeing strategies. And I'm just wondering how it is envisaged, or whether the EDS steering group have taken that into consideration, or will be taking that into consideration when it works through the potential governance options? And given that we're wanting ratepayer bank for our buck to go as, to stretch as thinly as it possibly can to cover as many different potential outcomes as it can, whether there are ways in which we can ensure that other strategies or the outcomes of other strategies can be considered at the time of project development for the EDS? development for the EDS, and what the methods might be for ensuring that happens. And I just wondered, the reason I ask the question, it may be that those discussions are already in place, but I wondered whether it might be worth adding to the end of two, a final, a fourth bullet point, which says proposed methods to ensure alignment and integration of EDS economic development strategy project outcomes with other DCC strategies. The reason being, what, so, sorry, that was a question, what did start off as a question that turned into something else?
I think, basically, we do, we've got a strategy group set up by, set up within council, where we look at a number of the, a number of the strategy plans across the council, and we do try for alignment with the strategies across that group. As you're all aware, there are different strategies concerning community development, whether there's funding for that as well. Sometimes between economic development and community development is very blurry sometimes. At this stage, I'd have to think on that one.
Would it be possible to add that to the bottom of the list?
I think that the partnership needs to be aware of what, what's happening with the other strategies and the projects. I'm not sure that it's the partnership that should be charged solely with making sure there is alignment. So my view is more that there needs to be, like, we've got chief executive involved, who should know what's going on, we have economic development unit who should know what's going on around the city, plus we're proposing, or will be proposing, a new way of reporting to council, so that council is aware of the projects that are getting underway. So I have no problem with the partnership being asked to be conscious of the other strategies, which the strategy requires of them anyway, and the linking, but I'm not sure that they're, because they don't see all that's going on in economic development, they only see what goes on in the area of project that they're working, so.
Would it, would it not be perhaps prudent for us to flag with the EDS steering group at this point in time, that when they come back to us with their suggested or promoted governance scenario, that we'd like to see that reflected, some sort of methodology reflected in that governance structure? It may not be that they leave that work, I take your point that it may not be appropriate, but I would like to see how that methodology linked into our own processes as a council to ensure that that alignment was in place.
I'm quite happy with that. I think it'll be a case of what they can do to ensure alignment as opposed to doing, making that decision on their own.
Through, through the chair, under this partnership, each of those members would really have to go back to their governance bodies and get the okay for them too, because that's true partnership, what we're looking to do, so it is, you know, it's one of the,
I'm, I'm not sure whether councils are aware, but where, where a project is operating under the, under one of the partners, their governance board also performs a governance role, so if we, for instance, under project Shanghai, the chambers board has a report on project Shanghai every board meeting. A polytechnic council whenever there is a new initiative getting underway or something is changing, and that goes to polytechnic council for enforcement. So there are governance bodies sitting outside amongst the partners who actually have to agree to parts of what the economic development partnership does.
So presumably, the fact that they signed off on a document which reflected the need for it to align with our cultural, environmental, digital transport and social wellbeing?
They would expect.
They would be familiar with that, yeah. Two further, just quick questions. I note that in the report, there's a reference to both economic development strategy projects and economic development opportunities. Obviously, one is signed off as part of this, and is budget allocated to that, and then there's opportunities that presumably crop up in between time or from point to time. Whom is the decision around the funding for economic development opportunities as opposed to EDS projects? And is that the same process by which, or is it suggested that this interim delegation be extended to those economic development opportunities as well as EDS projects?
It really goes down to the three hundred and sixty five, three hundred and eighty five thousand. And what's happened in the past of economic development is quite as simple as black and white, very, very easy, but what happens occasionally, or quite briefly, you get things that come in from their field, which, for example, the, the Chinese investors arrived here, there was no sort of major, major warning, I couldn't go through a, a committee or anything like that, and when you, when you invite someone to a backyard, really, there will be costs involved, like it could be a meal with a number of partners who are interested in, in what they, what they're doing, or something around like that, or with in domain, in domain coming completely off, out of nowhere, and what we basically had to do was pull something together very, very quickly, which we needed to respond to, and that is, that is a cost that I didn't immediately take through the, but what we try and do ensure is each of those, and they could be enablers, under each of those themes in the strategies, and they could be the odd thing that doesn't quite fit perfectly, but that's what we try to do, and that's what I try to do with my team, keep, we keep the budgetary strengths very tight, but yet there's enabling things that occur, which they do, I need to have some flexibility to move quickly and rapidly, else the opportunities fall.
So just to understand then, the question that I asked around, is it proposed that the interim delegations extend not only to EDS projects as listed in the document, but also these economic development opportunities?
They will go underneath the, the delegation we have.
Yes, the interim delegations, yeah, okay.
Here's an, here is an example, they come in here in New Zealand, they wanted an investment prospectus, we put it together within a couple of weeks, and they've been over the moon with this investment prospectus. This morning, I've had a lady from NZT, an investment person in from Melbourne, she said it's the best investment prospectus she's seen from any other council or whatever in New Zealand, so she's going to go out and sell it, hopefully, to put the pieces for us. But these are things that are lead fields, they come in, and I've got to be able to move quickly, I can't wait six weeks, you know, put some things, or for, you know, for the strategy steering group, they're going to have some confidence in me that I'm going to manage it, manage it appropriately.
And just the final question that I have in relation to the new governance model is, obviously, the Gagatan campaign has been run by the digital office, which is entirely appropriate, and obviously the most appropriate entity to run a campaign like that, but they're not one of the strategy partners, so I'm wondering what opportunities exist, or how other potential prospective partners for economic development approaches which sit underneath our strategy, how they might hope to, like the digital office, come in and partner in order to facilitate those outcomes, given that up until now, I think the, the budget has pretty much been rankings for those partner, the, the EDS strategy partners, but we now have, I think, laudably situations where there are other partner organisations that are taking up parts of that work where appropriate. How is it that other organisations that feel that they could have a role in delivering on this strategy, how do they tap into this funding?
Well, if they come in, as they usually would, through the economic development unit, that would then come to the partnership, so opportunities like that. Digital office is fifty percent of its council funding comes from economic development, so it isn't tied in through that. But the other thing that's starting to change is, we've had a year in the partnership of basically planning and getting the foundations right for the projects. Now that those projects are starting to gain some momentum, we're starting to expand the number of people who are involved with projects. So for instance, there are advisory boards being proposed for the grow project, for the export uplift project, and that, that one's already got some people appointed on to it, so there is, so we're starting to try to engage on a wider section of business community to actually get more people with their shovel to the wheel, so there's sort of two, two sides to it. One, people are becoming involved in the projects beyond just the partner teams, and secondly, if there is, and in fact, if you look down the project list that has been worked on, a number of those have actually come through the EDU, down to the partners, to ask the partners whether they, they would endorse it and whether they would support it, so there is a process. Okay, any other?
I just.
Council.
Yeah, just a comment, and if I, for those on from what the council was saying, the, the future governance model is very, very important, and what happens there, we will have some input into it, and it, the whole economic development strategy needs to be driven, and it's a question of who's going to do that. Now, fortuitously, it was identified quite early on that education was something that a city really should be getting in behind, and it was, with a lot of work done with polytech, and they came back with a project that everybody could, could buy into, and we've already made a move by appointing a, a staff member to actually address that. But in the future, it'll be the governance model, or the new governance model that will be actually coming back to council and, and our other partners for the economic development to be able to say, this is the way we think this particular project should be driven, and we'll have our part to, to play by having an input in there, but so will the chamber of commerce, polytech, and the university in Itaguru, and they'll all be driven through the governance model that we come up with, or, or the partners come up with. So how that model is formulated is going to be very, very interested, very interesting, because I don't think, I think the way it is going at the moment is potentially here for conflict, but if we get the right model, then all the partners should come in behind it and identify a particular project that is going to benefit the city and follow along the eight points that we've identified in our economic development strategy. So the questions that Council McTavish should raise are fair questions, but the answer, the real answer to them will not be apparent until such times as we get that governance model in place.
Well, it sounds like we're starting to get into debate, so do I have anyone who'd like to move? So, Council McTavish, you wanted to move?
I would be happy to move what's on the.
On a paper with the addition of the fourth bullet point and the addition of ands between the representatives in B.
Yep, and the addition of.
And the word interim in front, well, following, following delegations, so following interim delegations.
And shall I bring the fourth bullet point up?
So, seconded by Council Kelman, you've got that? So, any debates?
I'd just like to see the.
Yep, all right, well. So we'll wait while we get those up. I think the pleasing thing for me is that at the start of this partnership programme, we never knew quite what the partners would bring to the table and, and partner organisations in terms of their investment, and I think what surprised me is the amount of investment that they are putting in. And I think that, that all goes well. I know from my involvement that some of the projects are right on that cusp of really taking off, so I think as those projects get reported, and the intention at this stage is to have one of the external partners plus one of the internal projects in economic development reporting at each meeting round, I think we can expect to see some pretty exciting stuff going on. So, how are we looking?
Mr. Junior, may I just ask a question to do with the papers attached here, the update on the projects updated at the end of this report? And it's a question about just the, how the, the upstart is still a, is morphing into something new, and I just wondered if, if the manager could just tell us how that might differ from what we've got at the moment? We've had upstart there for quite a number of years, haven't we? I mean, it must be over ten years, I think, anyway. I'd just be interested to know, I mean, some, some indication of, of the way it would unfold in the year, but, but it would be good to hear that.
Through the chair, upstart is morphing in basically, or it's not morphing in, it's keeping, the body's staying where it is, but the system is basically moving across, Steve Silver, et cetera, moving across to a chemical powerhouse, that has mentioned, which is based at Christchurch. This model is based on basically stuff that comes out of the ICT sector predominantly, but also stuff that comes out of the, out of the universities, like Christchurch, and they're already looking at some, some projects out of Otaka here as well. Upstart is a founder-led model, and the government really are not looking in, in that direction at the moment. So what will we require if we need to continue down this path, we have a founder-led model? We would really like something that ideally will not cost as much as upstart, and ideally which will still support those young entrepreneurs coming out, coming out who want to grow businesses, either they come from the university, the polytech, or outside from the community. And what we need to do is also, we don't want to put too many rules around it, because there's various models all around the world, and they all differ, so we need some flexibility in there so we can change direction very quickly. In other words, EDS on rollers, have wifi, all that sort of thing there, but the university are looking at basically the name of a building down, we're halfway between there and, and the polytech, it's on a bus route from town. So there's still a wee way to go on this one to get it right. We had a few ups and downs last year, but I think we're finally on the right track with, but it will also include elements around the Dachas, so we're not throwing that out at all. We've had some good companies come out of the Dachas, some really good companies, thankfully, um, let's see another one, um, on down George Street, I'm just trying to remember, but there's been some good companies come out, so. No, no. So, language, that's what I'm going to do this, so, does that help, can that help answer the question?
Certainly, as, as that, that project is sort of getting through the, I suppose, the preparation of the budgets and, and more understanding of how it can be run and how it will be governed, so as that work gets further down the track, if councillors are interested, we can certainly arrange for a presentation to councillors on, on the grow project proposal with a lot more data. At the moment, we just haven't got it down to the wire to know exactly how all of the budgets are fitting together, so I'm quite happy to take that on board if you'd like to see that. So we have some resolutions. Council.
I'd just like to speak to a couple of aspects of this, I support these recommendations, and I, but I think it's, and I think it's important to appreciate the context that this has been developed in. Up till a couple of years ago, the economic development budget was some two hundred thousand greater than it is now, and a good portion of it was distributed by a process, particularly through the industry project fund, by decisions made by councillors. And I don't think anyone here or then felt, at least in hindsight, that that was a particularly productive investment at all. And it wasn't because elected members made the decisions, it was because the model was wrong. Since we've, or previous council took some two hundred thousand out of that budget, we've developed the economic development strategy, and if anything, we are now, we have now much broader and more ambitious aims in, in terms of economic development than we ever had before, and we're endeavouring to do it with considerably less money. And the reason I believe that we think we will be successful is because we've got a better model, and we have, are leveraging what we are spending, albeit considerably less, with. leveraging what we are spending, albeit considerably less, along with the efforts of a range of community entities and stakeholders, as we have heard. And I think that we will get far more bangs for fewer bucks as a result of that. But I do take Counselor Bezett's point that going forward, the governance model as we've developed it, and clearly, as you develop something in conjunction with other entities, it takes a little long because you can't just say this is the way it's going to be and you're going to all fall into line. So it's going to take a little long and the governance model will be critical to its ongoing success. So I think it's important to understand however, that that context of actually considerably less spending with the ambition of getting considerably greater benefits than we achieved before. The second thing I'd like to speak to is the D, the 2D, the last one. I think this is actually very important. As was identified in the economic development strategy, it's really critical that we align the outcomes from different strategies that council develops, especially when we know we're in constrained financial times and we want to get the best value for every bit of spending that we do. Clearly, again, though, the Grodenin Partnership having external membership complicates our ability to align strategies because again, we're not in complete control of everything. However, I believe that it is primarily a council responsibility to achieve that alignment and to oversee it, if you like. And we shouldn't underestimate the risks and the costs of lack of alignment. We've spent a good deal of effort in the last few years breaking down the silos within council and I think we'd be pretty successful at it. We don't want to be inadvertently setting up alternative silos and not achieving that alignment. So, Mr. Anderson mentioned the strategy group within council, so I, and I'm a bit foggy about that, but I think that that is critical. So I think this is, this D is really important that we get a clear idea of the best ways that we can interact or council can interact with the Grodenin Partnership to ensure that we extract the best, the best benefit across the, across all our strategies when we might only be actually spending the money in one of them. So that's the reason that I support this, these resolutions.
Just through the Chair, dealing with the partnership, whereas we didn't use it in the old days, as you'll be aware, those people who've been in business might have partnerships, they do have their own little idiosyncrasies. And when you're dealing with five other partners, big partners, it, you know, it's important that we get that alignment right with all of them and move the city forward. So it is an interesting piece in time.
Just a couple of points that I would like to make. I think Dees and the Chair have both spoken to the importance of the partnership approach in the Mayor Hall and also, absolutely, I mean, I think that we all acknowledge that a partnership approach is the way to go about economic development in the city and kudos to both staff and to the Chair and to the Mayor Chair Bezett for the work that they've been doing to build that partnership and to try to ensure that there is a really good relationship there to build those projects on. And I acknowledge that it's not an easy role when everyone has, you know, different priorities. Having said that though, I do think that we around this table need to be confident and we need to be able to answer to our ratepayers in relation to ratepayer funding. Now, I acknowledge that there are, you know, there are other projects which other governance boards will be taking the lead on and we may not have a degree of, or much at all, oversight of those apart from through the EDS steering group. However, ratepayer funded stuff is our responsibility and I think that we need to ensure that when the governance model does come back, that we're confident that we can answer to our ratepayers and say we know that this money is being well spent. So that's, I think, I'm comfortable that this is an interim delegation pending that governance model coming back to us. I think that the dollar figure around it for me, that's a little bit arbitrary. You know, you can have a really high cost project which is really solid and then you can have potentially a low cost model which is, or project which is perhaps high risk. And I'd like to see a little bit of recognition of that in the governance model that comes back. Obviously, there will be some projects which this council would probably be right behind even if they were above the 50k investment mark, but there may be other smaller projects which we'd like to have a bit of say on. And so I think, I'd like to see a bit more thinking around how we can have a bit more of a nuanced approach rather than an arbitrary figure. The critical connections with other strategies, his worship has referred to the risks and costs of lack of alignment. I would also highlight the flip side of that which is enormous opportunities in alignment. So, perfect example is that the Grow project which Counselor asked questions about, you know, there are really significant gains to be met there in terms of social wellbeing outcomes, in terms of youth outcomes, in terms of potentially central city and spatial plan outcomes, potentially heritage outcomes. There are a whole range of potential benefits there and if we fail to take those into account, fail to have mechanisms in place to realise those benefits, that would indeed be a missed opportunity. The final point that I wanted to make is that the process around other entities and stakeholders gaining access to this partnership, I think is a really critical one. And it's really important that that process is transparent, that there is equal opportunity for a multitude of stakeholders to engage in this partnership and to build on and augment the work that has been started by the key signatories. And I welcome the fact that that is starting to happen. I welcome the advisory board approach, but I think we need, yeah, there's work to be done in that. And I think that this, I welcome the work around the governance because I think a lot of that will fall out of that process. So, thanks to all who have been involved today and I look forward to seeing B when it comes forward.
All right, I'm going to put it. All in favour? Against? Care? That brings us to notification items to the Chair. I just realised when Stuart Dillon Roberts was here, that quite a number of, well, all of the new councillors would not have had an opportunity to see what the Digital Office is actually doing. It's an entity that's probably strange to most of you. Is there any desire from you to have an opportunity to go through and have a look at the projects that are underway and what the outcomes are? Okay, well, I'll try to arrange an opportunity to, for you to get up to speed with just where that's at. Thank you very much and we will break in five minutes while we change chairs.